Good evening councillors and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, just draw attention to the fire regulations that are usual, they're on the screen behind me. Also, could you please ensure your mobile phones are switched to silent or off? Members of the public, I'd like to say that as a committee, we understand the matter under consideration tonight may be emotive. However, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee, and refrain from booing, cheering, or any other form of disturbance. This is a meeting held in public, it is not a public meeting. Let's move on to the main items of business. Minutes of the meeting which took place on the 22nd of June, been laid on table for the last thirty minutes, are you content I've signed these as a correct record of that meeting? Thank you. Gary, apologies for absence and declarations and substitutions.
Yes Chairman, we've received apologies from councillors Brian Adams, Mike Band, Stephen Mulliner, Mary Florozeski, and councillor Chris Stori. Councillor Patricia Ellis is here in attendance as a substitute.
Thank you very much. Item three, declaration of interest. Gary, members declared interest before the meeting?
None received prior to the meeting Chairman.
Right, thank you very much. Item four, Gary again, have there been any questions received from members of the public?
None received Chairman.
Thank you. Now we move on to the planning application, item A1, WA2015/2387, Woolmead, East Street, Farnham, GU970T. I believe Elizabeth, you're going to introduce the item first, and then Gemma.
Thank you very much Chairman. I'd like to start, members, by making a few key remarks, and then going to pass over to Gemma Patterson, the case officer, who'll take members through the plans and determining issues. Firstly, I think it's appropriate to say that the proposal seeks the redevelopment of a major and important brownfield site within Farnham Town Centre. Members, I'm sure will be aware that it's the council's and the government's strong preference for residential development to be carried out on brownfield land wherever possible. The site is currently rundown and of a dated design. The redevelopment to provide an improved environment and opportunity at the heart of the town has been a longstanding ambition of the council since the 2002 local plan, wherein it is identified as part of the East Street area of opportunity. Secondly, the application is in outline form tonight, with only access under consideration as a matter of detail. Members have been asked to consider the principle of the development, i.e. whether they feel that the application has demonstrated that up to ninety-six dwellings and 4,200 square metres of commercial floor space could be acceptably accommodated on this site in planning terms. The elevations which will be shown shortly are indicative, but if there are any detailed concerns or aspirations in respect of scale, appearance, landscaping, or layout, the reserve matters, then these, as you'll be aware, will need to be potentially accommodated at reserved matters stage. The only detailed matter to be considered this evening is that of access. Now Gemma will explain the access arrangements in detail shortly. Thirdly, one important consideration is in respect of affordable housing. The policy H5 of the local plan requires at least twenty-five per cent of affordable housing for a development of this form and density. The applicant, as you will have noticed, has argued that the development would not be viable if affordable housing provision is made. As required by our normal practice, in order to demonstrate this, the applicant's been required to submit a financial appraisal to set up the viability position. This appraisal has been independently assessed by our consultants, Adams-Integra. The applicant's case indicates that the current lawful land value of the site means principally that the scheme makes the provision of affordable housing unviable. The current land value reflects the granting of prior approval under reference CR/2015-0017 for the change of use from office to residential. And this was granted because effectively it's permitted development under the government's new permitted development regime, so it establishes the principle of a change of use to residential as permitted development. Adams-Integra have agreed with the applicant's conclusion that the scheme would be unviable if it provided affordable housing on site, taking into account the infrastructure contributions that the scheme must make to be acceptable in terms of infrastructure. Adams-Integra's report has been attached to the agenda as a confidential item because it includes some commercially sensitive information, and members wish to discuss this in detail then they would need to do this in confidential session, but it is hoped that sufficient information has been provided in the public part of the report to inform the debate, and of course, members have had the benefit of being able to read the confidential report with their agenda. Particular third-party concerns have been raised about environmental impact assessment, and I think it's important to stress that this current application is not EIA development as it falls below the screening threshold in the regulations. Nevertheless, air quality impact, which of course is very important in Farnham, has been considered and addressed in the officer's report. And a final point to make is in relation to the likely significant effect upon the Thames Basin Heath special protection area. The proposal includes the intention to make appropriate contributions under the council's approved avoidance strategy under section 106. This would, in the officer's view, avoid and mitigate any significant effects upon the conservation interests of the SPA, so an appropriate assessment is not therefore required under the regulations. The avoidance strategy, as members will be aware, has been prepared under the Thames Basin Heath's delivery framework and is consistent with policy NRM6 of the South East Plan. The approach is regarded as lawful and compliant with the habitats directive and regulations. I trust those key points are helpful to members. Chairman, I'm now going to pass over to Gemma to take members through the plans and the determining issues in more detail. Thank you very much Chairman.
Thank you very much. The site lies within the centre of Farnham One Way System, to the north-west of East Street and to the south-east of Woolmead Road. The site is currently occupied by a building of varying scale, which has retail at ground floor level and office and residential dwellings above. Access to the site is from the Woolmead Road to the north, and a subway links the site to the residential areas north of the Woolmead Road. The surrounding area is mixed in character, comprising a mixture of town centre uses. The Brightwells development would be located to the south-east. The existing building is of no great architectural merit and is reflected of a typical nineteen-sixties commercial development. Although the existing building is comprised of four floors in parts, it involves three and two-storey elements. The ground floor is predominantly comprised as a retail use, and the second, third, and fourth floors predominantly comprise office space, although the building also accommodates four two-bedroom residential dwellings. The application seeks outline permission for the demolition of the existing building and the erection of up to ninety-six dwellings, with ground floor commercial space and a flexible retail, professional financial services, food and drink, and drinking establishment use, with all matters reserved for future consideration except for access. In greater detail, the proposal would result in the demolition of the existing building and the erection of ninety-six dwellings comprising sixteen one-bedroom units, seventy-two bedroom units, and ten three-bedroom units, all spread out over the three floors. A basement is proposed, a basement is proposed that would accommodate a hundred and eight parking spaces. Members may note that the number of parking spaces has been reported incorrectly on page eight of the agenda, that correct number should actually be a hundred and eight. Although the proposal is for outline permission with detail relating to scale, layout, and appearance reserved, the application contains indicative floor plans and elevations to demonstrate that the quantum of development proposed can be accommodated on the site. Whilst the application has been submitted with several differing designs, members are advised that these are for indicative proposed purposes only, and that overall scale and appearance would be considered at the reserve matter stage in the event outline permission is granted. The indicative plans however do demonstrate that the overall built form of the site would be increased as a result of additional scale and massing. The indicative scale also demonstrates that elements of the proposal would be of a greater height than the existing building. It is also noticed that the scale proposed, there's the massing plan, sorry, that the scale proposed would be read well in context with the scale of the proposed Brightwells development, and if we just look at this indicative plan here of the section, you will see that the outline of the Brightwells development here, and this is looking through East Street with the proposal here. Just going to move back to the design now quickly. The design indicates a modern interpretation of the Farnham vernacular. Whilst the scale and appearance of the proposal could be subject to change, it is likely to be influenced by these key elements. And just have a quick look, sorry, we went through this a little bit too quickly, so this is the building mass comparison, you'll see the darker outline is the existing Woolmead building, and then the red and grey in the background are the indicative scale of the proposed building, which is below, just to give you an idea in context of the differing heights, mass, and bulk. The application is accompanied as well by a transport assessment, which has demonstrated that the proposed development would generate fewer vehicle trips than the current office, retail, and residential use of the existing building. The transport assessment also outlines two highway network scenarios. As members are aware, the Brightwells scheme involves the partial pedestrianisation of East Street, which would introduce a two-way traffic onto Woolmead Road and Bear Lane. The application therefore demonstrates a pre-Brightwells scenario, where vehicles enter from the east and exit the site onto the west existing one-way system in the same manner which is currently utilised. A post-Brightwells scenario is also being submitted to demonstrate that vehicles can enter and exit the site from either the east or the west. The proposal also encloses the closure of the existing private subway located to the north of the site, which currently provides pedestrian access from the north footpath of Woolmead Road through to the existing Woolmead Development and onto East Street. This is just a comparison of the site with the East Street development, Brightwells, just to get an idea in context of how these two would sit together. Just moving on to some photographs now, this is looking at the existing building, we're on Woolmead Road looking west of the site, you can see here, this just demonstrates the different heights of the building, we've got some two-storey, some larger three-storey and some four-storey elements. This is looking onto one of the parking courts at the back of Woolmead Road. And then this is Woolmead Road looking east, so we've got here, we've got the existing bus stop, we've got the subway running along down here, and we've got the existing access And we can now move around to the site onto East Street, this is the far east end of East Street with the retail below. And we're now standing on East Street, we're now looking west, again, just noting the difference of buildings, retail below. And this is a wider view looking west, this is East Street here. And again, this is, actually, this is the west end of East Street, I do apologise. Moving on to the matters of principal and technical opinion, these are the principle of the development, the location of the development, having regard to the acceptability of retail and residential uses in a sustainable town centre location, the loss of the commercial land, having regard to the prior approval fallback position, which permits the loss of office space and the marketing evidence submitted with the application, the loss of retail, having regard to the development's provision of larger retail unit spaces, the housing land supply, having regard to the significant contribution this site makes to the council's five-year housing land supply, housing mix and density, having regard to the provision of smaller units in a sustainable town centre location, highway considerations including traffic and parking, again, having regard to the professional opinion of the county highway authority, impact on heritage assets, having, oh sorry, I think I've missed one, sorry, affordable housing, sorry, having regard to the financial appraisal that demonstrates that it would not be viable to provide any on-site affordable housing, impact on heritage assets, having regard to the expert view of the council's historic building officer, who has concluded that the development would not harm the setting of the conservation area and adjoining listed buildings, flooding and drainage, having regard to the fact that the development would not increase impermeable areas within the site, land contamination and air quality considerations, having regard to the expert view of the council's environmental health officer, who was not objected to the proposal, subject to appropriate safeguarding conditions, archaeology considerations, effect on the SPA, having regard to the applicant's agreement to enter into a section 106 agreement to secure financial contributions towards enhancement and maintenance of Farnham Park and infrastructure and biodiversity. The matters from members' judgment tonight are residential amenity, having regard to the separation distances, and the indicative layout that demonstrates a proposal would have an acceptable impact on surrounding occupiers, the indicative layout and impact on visual amenity that demonstrates that the quantum of development proposed and an acceptable design could be achievable on this site, standard of accommodation, having regard to the indicative layout that demonstrates an acceptable standard of accommodation could be achieved, and provision of amenity space, having regard to the sustainable town centres location and the close proximity to alternative recreation facilities. If I can now just move members on to the update, members will see that one letter of representation has been received, which has raised new material considerations. On receipt of this representation, officers have secured additional highway plans. Members will note that on page two of the update, an additional swept path diagram has been submitted to demonstrate that vehicles can enter the new access from both lanes of the existing one-way system as an acceptable radius can be achieved. Page three of the update contains an additional plan, demonstrating that vehicles can enter and exit the proposed access from either the east or the west of the site. Page three also contains an amended plan to show a service bay for HGVs delivering to the site, sorry, utilising the post-Brightwells pedestrian scheme which runs eastwards. References made on page four of the update to the loss of the existing subway. The existing subway is in private ownership and it is not in the control of the county highway authority. The update reports that the county highway authority are not proposing any replacement pedestrian links following the loss of the existing subway. However, following the site visit, and on consideration of members' concerns at the site visit, officers have approached the county highway authority on these concerns. The county highway authority have therefore recommended that a better provision of pedestrian desire lines could be created at the section 278 agreement stage, through the provision of better footway connections across the grass, linking Lower Southview Road with Woodlands Road, and through improved crossing facilities at the traffic islands at the junction with East Street and Dogford Way. Officers are satisfied that these improvements could be secured through condition 11 in this application, which is a highway condition that seeks to secure a scheme for providing safe routes for pedestrians. The additional letter of representation also indicates that the proposal should be accompanied by an appropriate assessment in order to comply with the required habitats regulations. In relation to the likely significant effect upon the Thames Basin Heath SPA, the proposal includes a commitment to contribute to a section 106 agreement to make appropriate contributions under the council's avoidance strategy. This agrees with the officer's view, satisfactorily, this would in officer's view satisfactorily avoid any significant effect on the SPA. The avoidance strategy has been prepared with the Thames Basin Heath's delivery framework and the provisions of the South East Plan policy NRM6. The approach is regarded as lawful and in compliance with the habitats directive and regulation. Page five of the update also contains an amended condition to condition three, to include the provision of the additional highways drawings. The recommendation therefore is subject to the completion of a section 106 legal agreement to secure infrastructure contributions towards highway improvements, early years and secondary education, recycling, playing pitches, and to secure Thames Basin Heath SPA contributions within three months of the date of the resolution to grant permission, and amended condition three shown on page five, that permission be granted subject to conditions 1, 2, 4 to 21 on pages 72 to 81 of the agenda, and informative 1 to 22 on pages 81 to 84 of the agenda. Recommendation B remains, that if condition A is not remet, then the reasons for refusal are set out in the report. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much Elizabeth and Gemma. Now we move to public speaking, and I call first on the objector, Mr Gerry Hyman. Please come forward and take your four minutes.
Thank you Chairman, good evening members. You've received an email from me yesterday, I apologise, I put in a response in March, but I couldn't find it on the web, so when I saw the officer report last week, I was rather dismayed and resubmitted it. I thought the meeting was tomorrow, of course, or Wednesday, as you normally are, but anyway, this evening is all about road servicing and access. Obviously, we all want the Woolmead improved, but this application, as has been shown, relies on Cress's falsified transport assessment. I have explained, and I'm willing to explain to anyone at any time, the evidence, it's in the old transport assessments that Cress Nicholson put in, in 2006, 2007, I have explained how they removed statements which show that they have never modelled the Royal Deir junction reconfiguration, which is part of the pedestrianisation plans which this planning application relies upon. So, you know, although we all want the Woolmead done, I think we need to do it properly, this entire thing is based on fraud, it's based on a fraudulent transport assessment, I think fraud's the only word that you can use for a falsified transport assessment for a hundred million pound scheme, the East Street scheme. I'm very sorry that the applicants here have been caught up in this, but four years ago, I did meet with Maurice Fitzgerald, and we do know each other, he'll be speaking next from Farnham Colonial, and I met with his team, I explained the problems with Cress' pedestrianisation proposals, obviously, they can't come in here and try and fight something else you've already approved, they just have to try and go along with it. The East Street mess is creating problems for everybody. Your officer update sheet tells you that the new plans have overcome the problems that identified, well, your update sheet doesn't mention the fraud issue, does it? It just wants you to carry on and turn a blind eye, as has been done for the past eleven years. We do keep coming along and telling you, it's about time that we did something about it, don't you think, if you would please? If you want the evidence of the fraud issue, you remember, I came along to the, very simply, I came along to April Council, I asked, when are you going to model the Royal Deir problems? And councillor Julia Potts told you, and told me in response, that they do it after the East Street scheme has progressed. Well, that's ridiculous, you can't do that for an EIA application anyway, of course, you know, you can't leave the modelling and the mitigation till later. It started off about, this started some, 2005, I was chasing this, and the then portfolio holder, Chris Mansell, told the chamber, I'm going to quote, he said, "If you actually have a chance of looking at the Pramex model, which is an extremely interesting dynamic flow model of traffic produced by Surrey County Council, you just have to look at the flows, it's hopeless. Apart from agreeing and taking on board, I'm sure that members on both sides are deeply concerned about where all this is taking us." Now, eleven years on, we know where it's taking us, you hear you're being asked by your officer report to perpetuate fraud, and that is really what tonight's meeting's about. I notice from the update sheet, it seems that to try and get round the access problems around the back, the road narrowing's been removed, so, you know, your officer report basically confirms that what I've been telling you is absolutely correct, but they can't address the fraud issue. Don't expect your officers to stand up and say, yes, he's right, give him a P45, they're never going to do that, Surrey are never going to do that. Your air quality officer seems to be satisfied that gridlocking the town is fine, how does that happen? Well, I'm asking that you refuse consent to this, please, so that we can sort out this fraud issue. You're being asked to support fraud, that's it. You could defer your decision to investigate this and consider the changes, you've got new plans submitted just now, none of us has had a chance to look at them, you've got swept path diagrams that look a complete mess, I hope you're going to forensically...
Can you wind up, Mr Hyman?
Thank you Chair, forensically scrutinise this application, take on board what you know is fact, councillor Potts told you it hasn't been modelled, you know it's fraud, please don't support it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hyman. Now can I introduce the supporter, Maurice Fitzgerald, to speak. Again, so you have four minutes from when you start speaking, thank you.
Good evening Chairman, members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Maurice Fitzgerald, Development Director at BMO Real Estate, the asset managers for Friendslife, the freeholders of the Woolmead Centre. Thank you for the opportunity to address the committee this evening. As you know, the Woolmead is a unique, unloved building, with the majority of residents and stakeholders wishing to see redevelopment. The common thread of the public consultation questionnaire was, can I help with the demolition? Whilst unanimous in agreement that the centre is unattractive and requires redevelopment, this represents its own challenges. The buildings are outdated, unattractive, with numerous construction issues. The centre is an island site, long, narrow, and difficult to provide additional accommodation. As a background, we have worked extensively over a long period of time to formulate proposals that were acceptable to Waverley Council, Farnham Town Council, stakeholders, and statutory authorities, including highways. With the latter, Surrey County Council, the highways authority, particularly lengthy and detailed discussions have taken place to ensure the highways design is robust, practical, and deliverable. Surrey County Council have confirmed unequivocally satisfaction with the proposals. As part of this process, an extensive exercise was undertaken throughout this period by way of public consultations, meetings, and a dedicated website to liaise with residents and stakeholders to ensure all views were appreciated. This has included extensive liaison with officers over a number of years to ensure an acceptable scheme was developed and designed. The process has involved many redesigns and amendments to accommodate all matters and requirements. At the very outset, a validation list of all matters to be included within the application was agreed with Waverley. This covered all planning requirements from environmental matters to ground conditions. The content of our outline application fully concurs with WBC requirements and policy. This outline application before you provides a new chapter in the life of the Woolmead with potential to invigorate this area of Farnham. It will comprise well-designed, appropriate external elevations in keeping with Farnham, quality residential in a pleasant, attractive environment, with retail provision for new town centre requirements. The retail units are flexible in design to accommodate larger floor space needs. The proposal replaces an unattractive building with new development that will fit into the existing townscape, but at the same time provides a functional building meeting modern standards, complementing and working with other proposed new development. This is the first stage for the Woolmead, this is an outline application, the next and second stage, if approved, will be a detailed application with all design matters considered. It comprises national and local planning requirements, and is an excellent example of town centre brownfield development in a highly sustainable location. I wish to commend the proposals to you as a worthy and desirable addition to Farnham in line with your officer's recommendation, and trust you will support them. in line with your officers' recommendation and trust you will support our vision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Fitzgerald. Members. Your turn. councillor Coburn.
I was deferring to councillor Hill. I thought it was in his ward, but maybe he doesn't want to speak about it. Can we just nail a few myths about this scheme, which, as Maurice said, he's worked extensively with everybody in the town throughout many, many years, long before this particular scheme came in, to try and get something that everyone wanted on this site? He's absolutely right. I told him he should sell tickets for the demolition. I'd have paid something to get in one of the vehicles and knock the thing down. It is universally hated. We saw it on the site visit. It's, I mean, to say it's tired, it's a dump. And how anything on an island site was given permission to have a front and a back, I do not know. This underpass is something of a bit of a red herring, to say the least. The natural flow of pedestrians do not go through that underpass. If you want to get to Lower South View, either end of it, you either go, you cross at the end where we sort of looked at the, where we hoped to have a signature building, you cross there over the grasses, I think you mentioned, Gemma, in some extended, you cross at the top end. If you want to go to the other end, you go up Bear Lane. You know, the idea that you would cross the road where this underpass comes out to get anywhere, you just cut a brick wall. I mean, that's how the thing works. So how the underpass was ever conceived, again, I don't know. And I think they probably put the bus stop there to give the underpass a meaning, because, quite frankly, it makes no sense. Pedestrian flow just doesn't work like that in the town. There's just no way you would do that. So the underpass has been, you know, it's been everything. You wouldn't want all the antisocial behaviours and good riddance to it, I say. So we're looking here at access and access only. I hope we can still have a bit more influence on some of the elevations. But in terms of access, I can't see anything wrong with this at all. We've got pre and post Brightwells, all of that's still up for grabs. I think, you know, that there will be changes, but looking at the diagrams we've got and with the support of highways, you know, if access is what we're looking at, I really can't see any reason to refuse this on access. I think there is work to be done, there always is, when something comes in at the reserve matter stage. But in terms of what we're looking at here, ninety-six homes, brownfield site, hideous building being knocked down, awful subway being removed, you know, what is there not to like about this? Standard of accommodation, we can all wish for different combinations, but given where it is, given the site, as long as the standard of accommodation is good and the actual building sits well in its context, because it is adjacent to the conservation area, although it's not, strictly speaking, in the conservation area, you only have to throw a stone at Bear Lane and you're in it. So we do want to make sure that this fits in well with that. And I do wonder sometimes about the approach from Guildford Road as you come in that bit into Dogflood Way, that, you know, we perhaps should do something at that corner. It is a signature sort of corner as you come in, and at the moment, that end of East Street is pretty dull. You've got low buildings on one side and the hideous Wollmead on the other side. So again, you know, we can do something that adds to the interest as you come round into, and of course, that will change slightly post-Brightwells too. So there's lots of small details, but we're looking at a principle here, a principle, a brownfield site, a hideous, out-of-date building, and the possibility of putting up ninety-six flats and some decent retail. And I really can't see anything to moan about in this one. The affordable homes, I fully understand that the problem, we've had other instances of this in the town centre recently. We have the report, and I think the report is pretty clear. So, you know, I can fully understand the applicant's decision on that. I mean, look at it. How, how did anyone ever, ever think that that should go in anywhere, let alone Farnham? I mean, really, you know, join the queue. Let's just get this thing knocked down, please.
Going to say, the inland revenue was there as well, weren't they? In the early days. councillor Patricia Ellis.
Thank you, Chairman. If no one else is going to speak. I would agree. Farnham is not my part of the borough, but it's a very beautiful borough, beautiful part of the borough with elegant and lovely buildings. Now, I really don't have an issue at the moment, at this part of the debate, with the actual access, which is what we're here to agree to. But I am very concerned about the principle of accepting the indicative plans relating to the design of these buildings. I'm really sorry, but in my personal view, we're almost replacing like for like. It is a hideous, horrid building, much unloved. And looking at the indicative plans here, I actually don't see that these are very much better. Farnham has some beautiful, as I say, and elegant buildings, and I don't see that this proposed, these proposed buildings in any way enhance the area or the conservation area. So I have great reservations about agreeing to this. Thank you.
councillor David Ellis.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'd like to echo councillor Ellis's concerns about the design. I know this is reserve matters, but as we know, these, some of these indicative drawings come back to haunt us in the future. And I would like to lay down a comment that should anything remotely like these indicative plans come before us under reserve matters, then I certainly won't be supporting them. And I mean, looking at that, I can see that in two thousand and sixty-six, they'd be selling tickets to see that lot demolished. Somebody made reference to a modern version of the Farnham vernacular, well, since the nineteen eighties, Farnham has worked very hard to develop a decent vernacular with a mixture of sort of classical proportions and modern design, and that just doesn't come anywhere near it, as far as I'm concerned. I'm also concerned about the hundred and eight parking spaces. And if that goes forward without being picked up under reserve matters, we do have parking standards in Waverley, and I don't see any reason why this development shouldn't comply with those. Thank you.
Thank councillor. councillor Heath.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And whilst, again, this is another area that is not up for consideration tonight, just want to put a marker down for the environmental issues, which I look forward to revisiting when, at the appropriate time. However, one question for officers. Should I be at all concerned that there is no language within the conditions that would reinforce the council environmental health officer's comments that a condition is placed on this application to ensure that should the air quality deteriorate further due to the additional traffic, further mitigation will be required from the developer? On page twenty-three at the bottom there.
One moment while the officers confer. Gemma.
Sorry, councillor, just to confirm, the condition that was put on by the air quality officer was discussed with the air quality officer at the time, that is a very difficult condition to try to be able to enforce. The proposal would not generate as much traffic as the existing proposal, sorry, as the existing site, plus you've got the Brightwells development coming as well. It would be very difficult to be able to determine the level of additional air quality deterioration from the proposal itself, in combination with all the other traffic and travel that's been, would be associated with the adjacent developments. So for that reason, with the air quality officer's confirmation, we couldn't impose that condition. I hope that explains that.
While you're there, Gemma, do you want to come back on the, I think, councillor Ellis's comment on parking?
Yes, councillor, I mean, the number of parking spaces proposed is a hundred and eight, and that would provide for the residential parking scheme, which requires a hundred and one parking spaces in accordance with our standards. The shortfall is in what would be for the commercial aspect of the development. Currently at the site, there are sixty-two parking spaces. That's to serve the existing residential office and the dwellings there as well. That is also quite a significant shortfall of parking spaces provided. If you have a look in the report under the section on parking, I've actually done a scenario where there's a worst-case scenario. The problem is with the ground floor flexible use, officers can't be certain which uses are going to be in at each time. So obviously, each use has a different parking requirement. And because of that flexible use, it's very difficult to try and work out exactly the parking requirement for the commercial use. But notwithstanding that, we've taken a worst-case scenario, and that scenario is, you know, as it would be, it is a shortfall of parking provision. However, the officers have taken into consideration the existing situation where there's a shortfall of parking, and the fact that the site's in a very highly sustainable location, near to public transport, near to car parks for employees. Now, it's more than likely that the proposed residential parking spaces will more likely be allocated. So, you know, we're satisfied that they will be provided, but it is the fact that it is in quite a sustainable site that we are accepting the shortfall in commercial spaces in this instance. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Gemma. councillor Heath, you want to come back?
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. It's really to follow up on this question of the analysis. I'm not an expert, and I appreciate entirely the potential nightmare of trying to model who is responsible for how much proportion of air quality impact. Fine, I get that it's difficult, but if the air quality is proven to decline following the two developments, first of all, do we have an obligation to mitigate that impact? Or, wrong, is there an obligation on anybody to mitigate that impact? And who will carry the risk of having to do that? And what I'm getting to is, who's going to pay the bill?
I think in terms of mitigation for this particular development itself, the air quality officer has recommended some conditions to, in terms of to try and mitigate the impact on air quality, including electrical vehicle charging points and restrictions during construction, et cetera, et cetera, to obviously dampen any sort of air suppression in that respect. But in terms of your question, I'm just going to have to take advice on that quickly. Thank you.
Louise.
I think the important figure to recognise is that the current proposal would generate a lower number of vehicle movements than what exists on the site at present. And so the air quality potentially going to reduce as a result of the proposal in comparison with a fully occupied building at the moment.
Thank you both. Do you want to come back, councillor Heath?
In which case, if the impact, if the vehicle movements reduce, it's not an issue. Now let's work back from shock horror headlines in the local press about Mrs so-and-so having a, you know, a air pollution or pollution-related collapse. Who is going to mitigate the negative impact? If there is a negative impact? I've got it, there's no problem if the road, if the traffic reduces, but let's say for some bizarre reason, it doesn't work out that way and it goes up. What's the risk mitigation strategy? Who's carrying that ball?
Elizabeth.
Chairman, if I could answer that. There is another strand of regulation here, in that this, of course, is a designated air quality management area. So there's ongoing assessment and monitoring of air quality in the area. In any event, there are tracking points, important points within the area. And so the environmental health team, the air quality officer, is separately over and above the planning application input. They are responsible for monitoring those levels. I think in terms of your responsibility as a planning committee, I can comfort you in terms of reassuring you that if there were breaches of regulation in terms of limits of emissions, it would not come back to you as a responsibility on the grant of planning permission, because the assessment of the planning application is whether or not, at the time of the application, taking into account the detail of the single application. There is an objection in air quality terms that should be mitigated. So we've carried out that assessment properly. We've asked our expert, and they have, against the reasonable planning position, which Louise has explained, has recommended the appropriate conditions, and they're the ones we suggest, if you grant permission, that you include. And that's as far as your position as planning authority is concerned, a complete and thorough assessment of the situation. But as I say, there is in tandem a separate monitoring exercise going on as part of the air quality management area, which is by our colleagues in environmental health, under separate legislation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. councillor Hill.
Chairman, this development's in my ward, and I'm pleased to see further regeneration of the East Street area. I'm pleased to support the proposed scheme and very much concur with councillor Coburn's comments earlier on. I think that anything the developers can do to consult with local members from time to time would be most welcome, and I very much hope that we will end up with a building that's an architectural asset for our town. I did also have a query about the parking provision, but I think that's now been sorted out. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. councillor Stewart, stand.
Thank you, Chairman. I may be able to help a bit with the air pollution, sorry, going back over old ground, but as you know, I run a fairly large fleet of transport, which is popping in a hundred and fifty items. And each vehicle is now, has, has its own reduced pollution certificate. And if you're running a modern fleet of transport, like, for instance, they're eighty-five percent better than what they were ten years ago. So from a pollution, you can't get away with it now. You can't go into London, and if you do, it costs you mega money. And so most companies that are running these vehicles have got what they call tier four B engines, and they're all European Euro five, Euro six, and are really pollution-free. As I've said in here before, you can actually put a white handkerchief over the exhaust, rev it up flat out, and the handkerchief stays white. And if, it's, not only from that point of view, the economies of running those big engines is, it goes up from four, if you're running an old engine, it's, say, four to the gallon. When you run a modern engine, it's eight. So it's beneficial to the operator, although it's more expensive to set up. But we, as an industry, even on construction equipment now, tier four B is the minimum. And we're all working very hard to get that pollution down, and it will dramatically improve. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Brian Ellis.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not too sure that I've got really anything more to add. Councillor Coburn said it all, really. And I think the fact that Farnham Town Council fully supports this application as well suggests to me that the days of the Wollmead building are very much numbered. My first approach to Farnham, indeed, many, many years ago, living as I do in the eastern part of the borough, was around Dogflood Way, East Street, and then down to the South Street Car Park. And as a welcome to Farnham, a beautiful old town, the Wollmead is absolute rubbish. I have to say that I have some concerns about the proposed replacement, but we're not really talking about that. Highways are perfectly happy with the access, and that's really what we are here to primarily to consider. I do have one other observation to make, though. Mr Hyman, in his... I do have one other observation to make, though. Mr. Hyman, in his presentation, in his four minutes, I can't recall now just how many times he used the word fraud. Now, in eastern planning, we would have a lawyer sat at that table. And I'm puzzled really, like, at the moment, we don't. And is there going to be any legal view on Mr. Hyman's view of fraud in this respect, or not? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I will ask Elizabeth to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. What I would say, councillor Ellis, I share your concern about the comments that were made by the public speaker. And I think I can say, as your head of planning, that I refute any suggestion that the information that was taken into account in the Brightwell's planning permission was anything other than transparent and scrutinised by experts and presented to you fairly, and you made a valid decision. And of course, that decision is extant, has been implemented. So I do take exception to the implication that there was something untoward about that process. And on your behalf, I'm very happy to take that up with our lawyers, if you would like me to. Thank you, Chairman.
I think we would like to do that, because I totally agree with councillor Brian Ellis on this matter. Unfortunately, the lawyer wasn't able to join us this evening, so that will be taken further. Thank you for that. councillor Holder?
Thank you, Chairman, and welcome back from Europe. I want to follow up on councillor Hess's comments on air quality. And I'm wondering if we can perhaps suggest that each apartment is given one parking space, and anybody wishing to have a second car, that second car should be an electric car, and parked in the parking bays with the electric. I don't know whether that would be a bit too right-wing, or, but nevertheless, I think it's a suggestion perhaps we could look at.
Draconian, maybe? councillor Anna James?
Thank you, Chairman. I fully support the application. Having never really been round the back of the Wollmead until yesterday, it does need knocking down. And I think I'd quite enjoy it as well. But I do support when the reserve matters come and the applicants are here. I have to say, looking at that picture in front of me, with every single window the same height, black, I cannot believe that that is the best design indicative that could come to Farnham. Everybody likes Castle Street. There is no resemblance of any part of Farnham that I think that that takes notice of. It's got flat roofs. It is just another concrete block, but it's just a slightly different colour. There's no individuality of any of those shops or premises at all. If they're all built like that, I think it would be very upsetting for the people of Farnham. And I do think, as they're here, perhaps they could have a little bit more imagination. But I fully support the application for the access as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. I just look at the Farnham Town Council, who recommended this application. I think the developers, in their process of consultation, their websites and everything else, over a very long period of time, have done a great deal. And I think they will be listening to the comments that have been made by councillors and will take away. When I was looking at the indicative East Street elevation, I did wonder whether it was indicative or whether it was the current one. I found it a little confusing, I must say, and I wasn't particularly enamored with that scene. So hopefully, the developers are listening and will take action further. councillor McLeod, sorry, sir?
Thank you, Chairman. And the other Ward councillor along for more part. I think it's fair to say that councillor Coburn has represented very fairly the views of the people of Farnham. This is not a popular building, and it's very important, it's knocked down and replaced. And I think it's fair to say that the developer has done very extensive consultation with the town council, with the Farnham Society. And they are quite mixed views in the town, and whether or not this is a good design. I don't regard myself as a great expert in design, but I tend to concur with the other councillors that this doesn't look the most wonderful design in the world. So like everybody else, I hope the developers will listen to that and rethink that before they come to the final application. I'd like to also comment, though, that my big concern about the whole thing, and perhaps it's a little bit unfair to this developer to comment on it, is the big problem in Farnham is transport, it's traffic, and it's to do with all the problems that the pedestrianisation of East Street will cause at the Royal Deer Junction. I don't want to get into discussions about fraud, but I think there are very real concerns about that. And I do hope that, and I don't know, I'd just like to ask the general question, will there be an opportunity to visit that, revisit that issue, looking at the in-combination effect of this application and the Brightwell's application in terms of the traffic implications, and in terms of the air pollution applications? Because that's what concerns me, and I think it's what concerns everybody in Farnham. In terms of this application, I was thinking of possibly abstaining or something to make that point, but that would be unfair to the developer. I think this application has to be supported. But I would like to make these very strong reservations, make these points, and ask, how will that be addressed? How will the in-combination effect of this application plus the Brightwell's application, because they're going to occur together, one after the other? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Stewart, stand up.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to add, my colleagues have said about the design of it. I didn't think we were going to discuss that tonight, but the developers are here, and I think it could be made nicer. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask the officers if they wanted to come back on, comment now?
Thank you. When the Brightwell's development was assessed, it was assessed in combination with the existing situation, which includes the current Wollmead building. And as the proposal would generate sort of less traffic impacts, we would consider those in-combination effects have already been considered. Thank you.
councillor Byrne?
Thank you, Chairman. I just decided to speak, so, a recent one. I was thinking, the site visit was good. I'd never been around, well, I have driven round the back here, but I'd never looked up before. And what a horrible site it all was. I was just amazed how poorly designed the whole thing was. And I don't believe that the drawings we've got on our screen in any way replicate that, but they are pretty uninspiring, aren't they? So I agree in principle with the fact. And I loved the statement from within the report, that it was, it fitted in with the, I can't remember the exact word now, but fitted in with the vernacular of Farnham, no way did it do that, but that's what it said. The only other comment, so I'm fully supportive of the whole scheme. It's been a long time coming. The loss of the, as Carol Coburn said, the loss of the underpasses is not going to be, is going to be welcomed by many. I've just got one small suggestion. It's a big space under there. It's dry, I presume. Would our street cleansing team wish to use it as a base for their street cleansing operations, as a better place than somewhere else, further away, where they have to be bussed in? I don't know. It's something I tried to introduce in Guildford, and it wasn't, it wasn't seen to be worthwhile. But I think it's still a space there that could be used under the road for the street cleansing team and whatever vehicles or systems they have.
councillor Stanhope?
I went on the site visit with other members of the committee, and it has been quite a revelation, looking at the front and the back of the building that's there at the moment. We have these indicative buildings in front of us, but no view from the back. I'm wondering quite what the view from the back of the new building would look like. Would it mirror that of the old building at all?
I'd ask Gemma to come back on that one, please.
I think, councillor, the elevations are indicative, so we've only been given one street scene to consider. And that's what the indicative building are being proposed to be.
I'm wondering if that was the problem with the original building in the first place.
Elizabeth?
Chairman, a number of members have quite rightly picked up on the matter of design. And just to reassure you, we're taking away your suggestions that you are expecting a high-quality design, probably a little different from what is before you, indicatively. It is in a very important location. And I think the developer will work with the community to ensure that the final submission on scale and appearance and design meets aspirations set out in the Farnham Design Statement, the Conservation Area appraisal, although it isn't in the conservation area, but it does have an aspiration for high-quality design in the setting of the conservation area. But also, generally speaking, your design policies that require something suitable for this extremely sensitive and important location. So I do take that point. And the detailed scheme will, of course, include all elevations. Taking councillor Coburn's point, it needs to be a scheme that works on all elevations and not have a front and a back, because it is publicly visible on all sides. So I hope that gives you some reassurance. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. councillor Coburn?
Yes, thank you. I was going to say a little bit of what Elizabeth just said, because one of the points we made right at the beginning was that this was an island site, a key island site in the town. And in fact, the rear elevation is the one that the houses in Lower South view back onto. They're lovely houses. They've got lovely south-facing gardens. But if they go upstairs, they have to look out onto the rubbish that is, you know, there at the moment. And one of the things we said, as really the back of the building relates more to the residential than the front does, you know, in a funny way, it's as key to get that right for the residents as it is the bit that we look at and call it the front. But if anything came in that had a front and a back, I hope this committee would just check it out 100%, because, you know, it's a difficult site, and I accept the difficulty. But you cannot have a front and a back on that site, especially if you're going to start throwing the traffic around even more. You know, it is just a disgrace at the moment. And whatever happens, the back has to be as good as the front, in fact, if not better, because that is the bit that the majority of residents who live to the north will be looking out onto. So it is a sensitive site. And at the reserve matter stage, I think we've all got to fight for something that really adds to the town. Going back to the Signature Building as you come in, councillor Ellis is absolutely right, the most disappointing entrance into the town is along either Guildford Road, sort of in that way, because you've got, it is slightly better now. We've got the hotel, we've got one or two improvements along that way. But it is not the most scenic route into Farnham. And when I'm king, or queen, I've not changed sex all of a sudden, when I'm queen, I shall restore that right turn from South Street off the bypass, because I really do think that we bring people in through the non, you know, the not very pleasant sides of Farnham. This could be something that improves at no end if we get it right. So yes, at the reserve matter stage, let's all fight to get something really superb on this site.
Thank you, councillor Coburn. councillor McLeod?
One follow-up point, if I may, Chairman. One of the big problems in Farnham for traffic is deliveries. Whenever you're held up in Farnham, you drive around the corner, and you find one or two delivery vehicles that shouldn't actually be there. And I just hope that this, the arrangement here won't make that worse. And that, in the terrible site that's there at the moment, at least all the deliveries are off the road. The plan here, I believe, is to have three delivery bays, two at the front and one at the back. And I guess my question is, for the number of retail units we have here, will that be sufficient so we don't find a lot of vans and lorries blocking up either Wollmead Road or East Street? Have you any comments on that, please?
I think Gemma's already got this one to answer. Thank you.
The servicing would have been considered by the County Highways Authority when they were looking at the access, and they were looking at where to put the, you know, obviously the service vehicles, as well as, you know, the refuse vehicles as well. And they've obviously considered that this is appropriate for this development. Thank you.
councillor Patricia Ellis?
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come back. And it's on the same issue of design. I appreciate what has been said. But I would like to ask the officers the question, please. Should we, or should I accept this application this evening? And as I've already said, I don't really have an issue with the access at all. But could you just advise me what impact, what influence us accepting the indicative designs would actually have on our ability to look at the application again in the future? Because it does appear to me, with some applications that we've considered in other parts of the borough, that having accepted indicative plans at this particular stage, when all matters except for something different have been accepted, has actually resulted in us having very little opportunity to influence the later designs. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Elizabeth Simpson is eager to answer that one.
Chairman, what I could suggest, if the committee are sufficiently worried about that point, that whilst, as I've said, it will come back to you, you're not committed to this design, that is a matter before you under the reserve matters. But from experience, in the past, sometimes it has worked to impose an informative, to advise the applicant that, notwithstanding the indicative details, that the reserve matters should provide a much higher quality design to reflect the high-quality design of its surroundings, or something that would satisfy your wording, to send a very clear message, even though in law you are protected, it's not before you at the moment, you're not approving it. But it will send the message to the developer, or anyone interested in the site, that the detailed design and appearance and scale need to be of a satisfactory form, of a higher quality than the indicative elevations. That's what I would suggest, to pick up your point, councillor Ellis.
Members, is there no further questions? On that, Elizabeth, can I just ask, we need a proposal and thinking to put an informative in for that. Yes, please. So councillor Patricia Ellis, would you? Thank you. So is that agreed, the informative on the design side? Agreed? Thank you very much. Thank you for that, Gary. Two recommendations. First recommendation, A, that subject to the completion of a 106 legal agreement to secure infrastructure contributions towards highways improvement, early years and secondary education, recycling, playing pitches and equipment, and secure the Thames Basin Heath SBA contributions within three months of the date of resolution to grant permission. Permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 2 and 4 to 21, informatives 1 to 22, plus the additional one that we've just agreed, as set out in the report, plus the amended condition 3, as set out on the update sheet. May I have those in favour of granting? Please show.
Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17. Unanimous?
Unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. So no there. We now move to recommendation B, that if the requirements of recommendation A are not met, permission be refused for the reasons set out in the report. Those in favour of recommendation B, please show. Unanimous again. So thank you very much indeed. Recommendation B is agreed. There's no need to exclude the present public. So that completes our meeting. Thank you all. Thank you all very much indeed.